Called to order. Number two on the agenda is public comments. Lance Benton from Benton's Louven Toon, you're first.
My name is Lance Benton. I'm from Benton Service Center. We've got two stores here in Guthrie. We're just a small business. This is my father, Don Benton. He started thirty-three years ago. We've been in this town a long time. We feel like we do a good job. We've paid sales taxes all these years. At the end of last year, ODOT announced the plans to replace the Cottonwood Bridge by dock. And these plans included extending their four-lane bridge right through our family business. They then sent out their bogus appraisals, appraisers that worked for them to tell our property, to tell us that our property was worth nothing. For thirteen and a half lots on Noble Avenue Commercial, our property value was fifty cents a square foot, which is sixteen thousand dollars. And I'd like them to go find another lot for that. That Noble Avenue has over thirteen thousand cars a day drive by it. And they just, I know this is a serious thing to say, but ODOT is abusing their power. They sent hired guns to prepare illegal appraisals to justify their low-ball offers. This is not the first time ODOT has done this. Our lawyers and appraisers are some of the best and most experienced in the state. And they can explain this abuse to you. They can also explain who benefits from this abuse, and it's not the taxpayers. We have tried to talk to ODOT. No one will talk to us. They won't meet with us. They will not answer our lawyer's letter. I know the city attorney has told you to ignore us, that this is not a city problem, but he's wrong. Abuse of power is everybody's problem. And protecting citizens from abuse of power is everyone's responsibility. This is the same bully tried to get the city to spend eight hundred thousand dollars to move utilities. You know how you felt when they told the city budget to swallow eight hundred thousand? Well, I'm a small business. They want to take my property for next to nothing. Me go to the bank and borrow another six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build my new location on East. Nope. If you will hear us, our lawyers and experts, we've got witnesses that can explain how certain people in ODOT have for years been using an eminent domain lawsuits to punish landowners who try to protect their rights. There are many property owners here today. There's plenty of them that's going to be downstairs when you have your actual council meeting that want to express their unfair experience with ODOT. Many of them will probably come to the seven o'clock meeting and not be on your agenda. In my opinion, this is not a state issue. We want you to hear us, take time to honestly look what ODOT's doing to us, and decide for yourself if ODOT is abusing its power. We're confident that you will find ODOT is abusing Guthrie property owners. We will see who's being damaged, and we will see who's benefiting. This needs to be addressed, and this needs to be on your agenda because you're losing Guthrie businesses. When you can't rebuild, what do you do? We've been here for thirty-three years. We know, we've built, we've met with builders. We've already talked to architects. We know what this new location's going to cost us. And fifty cents on the dollar isn't going to cover it. I'm sure there's plenty of other people that'd like to speak on the same subject.
If you'll have a seat, I'll get Ms. Davidson up here. Nancy Davidson. Let's hear from a couple of them and go from there.
I'm Nancy Davidson. I own Davidson's Greenhouse on West Noble, eleven oh one West Noble here in Guthrie. I've been in business forty-three years here in Guthrie. I raise my plants and sell them over there. ODOT has made me an offer to buy my property, and there is no way I can relocate with what they made me the offer. I would like to relocate and continue selling plants. And the fifty cents a square foot they offered me on my land, I've checked around, there's no place in Guthrie on Thirty-Three Highway Commercial, it's commercial, that I can buy land for fifty cents a square foot. We bought three houses over there and tore them down to build what we got. And it took us eight years to get all them bought and all that put together. I opened over there in eighty-two, but I was in two other locations here in Guthrie before that. I've been in business forty-three years. I've been sending sales taxes, you know, and for, the city's been getting their part all these years. We need more businesses in Guthrie, not less. And they're going to close businesses over there down. They won't never be reopening if they don't do some, you know, change.
Okay, thank you. Bruce, do you have anything extra to add?
It's basically the same thing. Me and my wife retired, purchased the property.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Me and my wife have not been in Guthrie but for, well, we bought the property in two thousand and seven. I retired from OG&E after thirty-two-plus years. My wife retired from the State Department of Correction after thirty-four years. We took our retirement money, purchased the property outright, and took out a loan to completely remodel it, which was a complete remodel job. ODOT came to me and said that they were going to treat me right. And we finished the remodel. Three months later, in two thousand and seven, they said, "We're taking your property." I contacted ODOT people, which changed numerous times, and the basic response I got from them was, "Don't do anything more to it because you will not get your money out of it." So we quit. We have a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in it that came out of our retirement and a loan. I said, "Alls I want is my money back." I did not buy the property to make proper money. This was going to, we were going to set up a shop on the corner ten twenty-three and ten twenty-one, West Noble. They came back and they offered me about fifteen thousand dollars less than we actually paid for the property before we took the loan out and remodeled it. One of the gentlemen went to high school with me. And he said, "Well, you know, we're going to treat you right." So I said, "Well, I understand that I'm probably not going to get all my money back, but you're asking me to eat over eighty thousand dollars on this piece of property." I said, "I can't do that." They offered me sixty-eight thousand dollars for that property that I initially paid seventy-five thousand for. That came out of my lump sum retirement from OG&E. That's gone. That's seventy-five thousand. And my attorney, they will not return his phone calls, won't answer his letters. The guy I went to high school with said, "You know, you should have gone ahead and put another roof on it." And I said, "If I did the work, that was ten thousand dollars more." I checked into it, if I did the work, which I was prepared to do. But the people, before you actually got into the nitty-gritty of buying our property, purchasing it for the rebuild, basically told me that I would not get my money out of it. I said, "Then you said I should have done it. That would have been ten thousand dollars more. I can't even get you off to offer me what I actually paid for the property initially, let alone all the remodeling in there." And that's basically where they're at there. Apparently, they've started procedure to renovate the property. That's all I have to say, is that we're not trying to make money. I would appreciate some help in trying to getting back the money we invested. We planned on having a thriving business in Guthrie on the west side because we did the work. There weren't any places that would provide what we were providing. And basically, well, our property value has gone down. They offered me also fifty cents a square foot. Where in Guthrie can you buy a corner lot on a highway in the city limits of In Town in Oklahoma for fifty cents a square foot? That's not even counting the building. That's just fifty cents a square foot for the ground. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Bruce. Council members, any, anything you don't know about what's going on here that you need clarification on?
Quite a question because it's obviously a state issue.
I'm sorry. It is not an item on the agenda. I cannot have y'all discuss it. I believe I have an ODOT rep here, is that right? That if the individuals, because we don't have any say in this project, they're here, they can use my office to speak if they'd like. So I brought ODOT so that these individuals, if they've said they haven't been talked to, they're welcome to talk about the project, am I correct?
Yes.
And they can use my office to do so if they'd like.
All right. So we heard it. We can't do anything else at this point. City council has heard it. So if all of you will go with these gentlemen into the next room if you want to talk to them. If not, you can leave while we conduct the rest of our business in here. That's up to you. Okay. We've got the public comments done. They are next door discussing it with ODOT. Number three. Discussion regarding convention and administrative rule quarterly update. Cody.
We will invite Cody Mosley. Normally, we would give a update to quarterly, so you might be wondering why we're doing so in February. But I've been asked to do a CBB update. So instead of doing it in March, we'll do it now, and then we'll get back on schedule. Or this is March, I'm sorry, October, November.
Just leave it to an accountant.
So do it in March. But the reason we didn't, that's right, the reason we didn't do one ever before, even though technically we've had CBB for six months, we did not have positive cash flow until January. So technically, we've been working January, February, so it's only been two months. The positive cash flow reason would be our first revenues received from hotel funds for the fiscal year were to pay the chambers, the remainder of their contract. So we didn't have cash until starting January. So really, we're just looking at two months from January, February. We probably should have done it in March, but here we are. And I want Cody to go through it. You have a document in front of you. He will not insult your intelligence by reading it word for word. So you can take that home and read that. And he'll crash through a presentation for you. Feel free to ask. Feel free. And I wanted y'all to see that budget in there. So he won't go through the details of it, but feel free to ask any questions and stop him as you like. Cody, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to be brief. You'll have the presentation on the screen that you guys can follow along with as well. It kind of goes out about a less detailed version of what you have in front of you in the paper. So let's start. Kind of what, the major thing that we've done so far in the operating of the CBB inside of City Hall, we issued and completed a contract for the advertising RFP. So what the RFP did was allow for experts to come in and provide strategy. The CBB board that you guys named, they were very interested in having metrics to determine how the money was being spent most effectively. And they wanted to come back and provide measurables to your city council as well. To remind you guys, last council, Stapleton was awarded the contract. We actually have Nick Archibald with Stapleton here tonight joining us to help keep the MacBook that I have over there alive so that we don't go dead on our screen throughout this process. Stapleton has a great, great history, working with some major clients. Oklahoma City Thunder, University of Oklahoma, and their outreach program. So highly, highly reputable, great guys, a great team that they have that really can develop some fantastic content. The selection process with the RFP was a competitive, non-bias process, which during our last CBB board meeting, the board really loved the thoroughness that we went through in how we select this advertising group. FY fifteen plan, just breaking it down. You'll see twenty-five thousand dollars dedicated to special events. That gets us nine events and about seventeen event days throughout this year. Along with financial contributions, we also provide in-kind services. For instance, Andrew Post has attended every single one of the Eighty-Niners meeting, Eighty-Niners planning meetings. And it kind of streamlines the process whenever I can call Max at Public Works and say, "Hey, we need, you know, we need to talk about this for events" instead of some other private entity going in and, you know, having to go through paperwork and everything like that. We can just pick up the phone. And so we have a big, broad access to all sorts of different things within our reach with the city managing the CBB. Forty-two thousand dollars in the advertising budget. That'll go into the graphic design, the videos, really promoting Guthrie as that entertainment destination. And then ten thousand, ten thousand dollar sponsorship agreement with Lazy E goes before you guys tonight. With the proposed increase in sponsorship, it resulted in a direct increase in the way Guthrie was promoted on the Lazy E website. We now have, if that agreement is approved tonight, we will have a clickable link from the Plan Your Visit portion on the Lazy E website, which will hopefully drive more people into town. Modernized advertising efforts. We wanted to obviously address that maybe pamphlets and handouts aren't always the way to go now that advertising has evolved. You see, one of the things I love about Stapleton's capabilities is their aerial drone that they have. They think outside the box. You'll see on the bottom right, that's their drone. They sent two folks down to Dallas to learn to train on it for a while and then came back and shot the MVP ceremony for Kevin Durant with the Thunder. This social media aspect, it's a great opportunity that we can take care of cheap advertising and really kind of extend that budget even further. Again, these experts are going to strategize our efforts and move forward with providing metrics. So what has been accomplished? Ordinance number thirty-two sixty-three that was established in October, established the CBB board. The goals is, the goal of that board is to promote general interest. You can read that, I know. Again, the major accomplishment was the issuing, the issuing and securing the request for proposal for the advertising contract. One last highlight for this slide is the contract completion with Queen of the Prairie. I will have some highlights from that moving forward in the presentation as well. Again, as Serena said earlier, the first quarter was completed on zero operating budget because of the final quarterly payment that was issued to the chamber to fulfill their, to fulfill their contract. The board completed the budget, and the budget is our plan moving forward. Some things that you do see highlighted in there is pledged annual support of fifteen thousand dollars to the Make Guthrie Weird block parties. This will provide June, July, August, and September for events that cover state sponsorship and advertising, could even cover talent as well. And so they, we're expecting at least four events from them this summer. Based on last year's totals, a very, very conservative estimate of ten thousand people will be brought into downtown for these events. That's just saying conservative again. We had at least two thousand people there at every single event last year. The last one actually accounted close to forty-five hundred with the final count. Eighty-Niners Day, we're excited to be continuing our support of the Eighty-Niners Day celebration. Again, not just financial contribution, but in-kind services with city employees and the brain trust that we have that we can contribute to them as well. And Queen of the Prairie, of course, this event is curated by Prairie Gothic, and we're so excited for what that team has got going. There's all sorts of buzz about Queen of the Prairie. This is just the latest article that we've seen from News OK highlighting Justin Townes Earl, who was their, a part of their second round of announcements. I think that they've got one more round of announcements for talent they're bringing in for the event. And of course, that event is May first and second of this year. So very excited for what that team has done and is continuing to do. Quick reminder, this is the same team that is behind those Make Guthrie Weird block parties as well, although they have not seen any financial contribution for Queen of the Prairie because it's a for-profit event. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you guys have about where the CBB, what the CBB has done or where we're heading.
I've got a question on the Queen of the Prairie. The Queen of the Prairie, I don't see it, I'm missing it on.
Again, there's no financial contribution for Queen of the Prairie.
Oh, okay. All right, I get it.
That's a for-profit.
And how about the Stapleton? Stapleton. Their cost for doing, are they a percentage?
Their contract is built into different versions of those line items. So they're handling the branding, graphic design, videos, advertising, other line item budgets.
Like a percentage or something?
Kind of built in for that. When the CBB board was initially brought the budget, there was an opportunity to join with livability.com in a contract. The CBB board didn't really love that idea because it was a, it was a major chunk of the budget for the first year, and it was a three-year commitment. So they kind of wanted to dedicate funds really off the bat in a different way.
I want to thank, we have two ex-officiates sitting at the table that serve on that. Welcome any comments they may have about the CBB board, and that'd be Councilmember Trey Ayers and Councilmember Cheryl Pageant. I know y'all have sat on that, but they haven't met a whole, I think they've met a total of three times. We meet monthly, which is the third Monday of every month here in this room. That's a public meeting, and all are welcome to come to that. I didn't know if y'all had any comments.
Well, I am very impressed with the enthusiasm in that group. I mean, it's electric. You just, you go into the room, and everybody has great ideas. They throw them on the table. There's no fussing. It's, it's just a great feeling that the people there are so excited about the growth in Guthrie and making things happen and putting things together and being a part of it. And I'm really excited to have been invited to sit on that board because I think it's a great thing. And the group of people really seem to want to make it work.
I'd like to just thank Cody too. I mean, he's the kind of guy here that doesn't really recognize in his youth that he can't swing for the fences on everything. That's what I truly enjoy about him, that, you know, he thinks we'll get Neiman Marcus here next year. That's okay.
He thought he had a degree before. He's earned one since he's taken over.
So I truly, I appreciate his fresh attitude, and I guess this is what I'm trying to say. Thank you very much. And I appreciate his insight and his outside as well, so thank you.
Can I discuss that here, or does he have to wait to?
I think it pertains to this, sure.
On the Lazy E advertising, if I read the agenda right, that's a three-year, twenty-five hundred dollar a quarter thing. Now, if I'm also understanding right, the city and the city council can only do one-year contracts. Does this not need to go through Public Works Authority?
No, you can do one-year contracts the way you renew that. I mean, you can do more than one-year contracts. You are allowed to do that. Whenever you approve the budget for the following year. If you don't approve it in that budget, that depends how you approve it. You're basically by default approving that contract again as a renewal when you put ten thousand in the budget. If the next council says, you know, whoever's doing that council budget says we don't do it, then we end the contract with that.
So the opt-out clauses come into play.
If you don't budget it.
One-year budgets. With the understanding that basically their price, the amount stays the same for three years?
That's what locks in.
Yeah, you're pre, you're basically pre-locking the price, but annualized. Do it every year, right. If we don't approve that budget line item, that goes away.
So is that ten thousand a year then?
Yes.
And I want to point out, I want to recognize Debbie Prather as our chairman of the CBB board. She's done a fantastic job leading that group, and very excited to have her. And again, thank you very much for your time. Any other questions, I'd be more than happy to.
One concern.
Sorry, I just wanted to. No, I definitely wanted to mention Debbie and her leadership.
On the hotel motel stuff, we all know where it comes from. My concern is that oil companies are moving out now. Everything's down. But because gas is down, we're also getting more tourists traveling through. So it's kind of a, you know, but what happened, my concern is, is that in your budget, I would almost recommend a five percent, you know, keep it behind just in case you don't have this full amount. And I know that with the new motels coming in, we really don't have that concern. But if all of a sudden, we didn't get anybody standing in motels, recession or whatever, you've got it budgeted here, we need a little reserve, if that's possible.
We do that. Talk about monitoring. Kim's team does a fantastic job of keeping me up to date on where we're at. We kind of, what is it, the quarterly, or the quarterly deposits for hotel motel, right? But they can kind of come in all at different times.
And I'll address, just like on sales tax, you know, if we have a quarter that bottoms out, then we don't do the budget. Then you stop. You stop doing advertising, you stop doing those things so we don't spend money that we don't have. Also, that the hotel fund doesn't have a reserve built, I mean, the, I'm sorry. The tourism part of your hotel revenues doesn't have a fund built up, but there is a fund balance from the parks side. So every year that rolls, so there's a cushion there somewhat, but that's dedicated for parks. But we're not going to spend, we know, we watch every quarter and see if we're meeting budget.
No, I understand that.
And then for next year, what we, how we budgeted this year, I'll have to, let me look. Hotel motel on, for example, we've watched it for ten years steadily increase, which has been really nice. For ten years straight, your hotel taxes increased. I think you're absolutely right that there's going to be a potential decrease. And I think we've started to see that occupancy numbers now. With the building of two hotels, I am no hotel expert whatsoever, but I do have concerns about occupancy. And you're building new hotels, and we're already seeing a slight change, decrease in occupancy. So you're right. I think when you look at it next year.
Yeah, a lot of it's just old company employees going away. But again, we're going to get, when summer gets here, we're going to get everybody traveling through again because if gas prices kind of stay down a little bit, but.
Staycation.
Yeah, it just concerns me that, I mean, that's a very fluid, and it's a lagging number. And so I always thought that even if the chamber, they should have had something set back so if something didn't occur and they had to make a payment, that they could make that payment instead of having to opt out of everything in the world that they've got something to cover them for.
I should bring up too, on that budget that you can see on the second page of that document, we have no intention of spending it all because really, we started, so that's an annual budget.
You started pretty much late.
I assure you, you should be questioning our ability to manage a budget if we actually blow that after we're already six months into the budget. So we, well, Cody would like to spend all of that.
I'd love to spend all that business, just there for God.
So we'll definitely monitor that. I don't expect for us to spend yours budget in that amount of time.
So if you spend, we'll say, six or even seven months of this in six months, what happens to the rest? Does it just get absorbed in the next budget? Or could we use a little bit for the set aside that the mayor was mentioning?
On your stabilization fund, that only addresses GPWA funds and your government fund, your general government fund. This is a separate account. So what it does is, you know, I always talk about how if we don't spend it in operations at will, it goes in the stabilization fund. This does not. So you always have a fund balance. So if we don't spend, and also because, go back and look at the ballot language in nineteen ninety-eight for hotel tax, it is dedicated. We cannot use that money for anything else. And so it's a dedicated sales tax, and so we couldn't even move it over.
Well, can we build in a little bit of a stabilization fund, whatever, in this? And that way, whatever's left over can sit in there. So we can pull it, and it would be like. So we can pull it, and, and, and it would be like what the mayor said, is the next fiscal year, we'll have a little bit set aside for it.
In, on the hotel language ballot in nineteen ninety-eight, it said there's this five percent administration fee. So that's really what we're not really touching. So you kind of have a, a five percent in there. I'd be happy to entertain the conversation about a true fund balance.
Yeah, to have extras is great, but to get short is also not great. And then that's all I'm, I'm bringing up.
I would suggest in a, and from a, from a philosophy on, on hotel funds, the issue is when you start putting some away, then you're not advertising your town at the same time. What's great about hotel funds coming in a recorder, like I said, then we just won't do the twenty thousand dollars for X. You don't do a brand, I mean, you know, you, you cut back. So we watch it every quarter. I get nervous when you start doing a very large stabilization fund on this kind of fund because then you're not doing the mission of the ballot language. The ballot language said, we will spend this amount of money, then we're basically.
I don't think it has to be big, especially if you're gonna have potential carryover, but like you said, the way we're budgeting now, you're gonna have some natural money carrying over. It might be good to keep there, and that's what we sit for a while and then kind of maintain a natural budget for the next fiscal year. So it's just a line item that we don't have to touch, then we just add to. And we get maybe to a certain number where we're like, okay, that's all we need to get to. We're feeling safe, we feel good.
Yeah, I, I think the five percent, I mean, we're utilizing as admin fee anyway, it just kind of says an adverb.
Yeah.
Because if you were, sure, and, and we have to make sure we're following that ballot. That's probably the, the most important, we don't make any policies that violate the, the vote of the people. I will say what the city did also, if you, if you remember, when our planning director retired, I didn't, I didn't replace that position. So we have significant salary savings in that group, and, and I won't go into the details of that. But Cody is already funded, not from this fund, because he absorbed this position. So we're not funding Cody, we're not funding any.
Salary, any, no rent.
Salary, benefits, phone, rent, overhead. And so that's one thing that I think we have an advantage to, is getting a bit, you know, a, a bigger bang for our buck, is that he's funded out of the general, general government fund, so.
At least for true advertising.
It, it will truly go to advertising for our community rather than telephones.
Well, and on that five percent ministry, it looks like you are counting it to the budget.
We did.
Maybe in the next year you won't.
We never spend it all. Well, I say that, for CBB, we're new at that, on parks side, we never spend it all. We can.
Any other questions for Cody? If they want to throw rocks, sticks? All right, thanks, Cody.
Appreciate it.
Number four, request for future items of discussion. Anything?
Maybe the stabilization.
Do you want it as a, because I'm also preparing for council retreat, just to let you know. So I'm also putting things on the council retreat. We've talked about awards, honors, like giving away a key of the city, things, things like that. So there's some things, if you want it on agenda or if you want it on council retreat, I don't know, once you start thinking about those things.
I, I want, I have already told you, I want to make it public. I want an item on the retreat about open mic night.
Yes, I've got it.
Because these things like we had tonight are pretty dangerous to lure us into talking about something we're not allowed to talk about because it's not on the agenda, so.
So give them that to actually talk and.
Or.
Or not. We should say it's on the agenda or you don't.
Yeah, we've had that discussion in the past.
We need to revisit.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Slip up gets trouble.
And I'm gonna do that.
At the retreat, we can cover that.
I don't, I don't know whether or not you wanna put what you're talking about. I think we need to be careful about calling it a stabilization fund. I think we need to, whether we want to.
Fund balance.
You know the word, fund balance?
Yeah.
And I think the visitors' grill board could handle it themselves, or to talk about it first.
Yeah.
Well, you only could ask that.
It's a good idea.
They're running, let them, let them decide if they want it or not. And then if they bring it to us, we can decide whether if we want it or not.
And let's put it out there at the retreat, I mean, it'll be June or whatever. There'll be plenty of time for them to look at it and.
See if, see if the visitors' girls want to do any kind of a pullback or something or plan it or whatever.
And even if that means just for like three years and then you, then you use the fee again now.
But you started with nothing, so, you know, this year's rough anyway, so. But anyway, okay, anything else for future items of discussion? Number five, where's your?